All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to study sessions, November twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Donna, can you go over please?
I will. Councilmember Bod.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman here. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Baron Esteco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
The first item is a presentation about a mobile medical unit. See manager Mark. They verbal.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe we have Matthew Rosales from Evergreen Treatment Services online tonight. Matthew reached out to myself and the police department. A service that they're providing in other communities and they have the opportunity to provide that here in Mason County. So we wanted to get the council some more information on this medical. It's a, let's see, a mobile medical unit, which is essentially a motorhome. You know, describe that a little more than outfitted. To provide some medical and, and mental health services as well as addiction treatment services. So. Is Matthew with us so far this evening? Great. Can turn it over to him. Give a presentation and some further information.
Hello, do you guys hear me?
Gotcha.
Oh, great. Okay. So as Mark said, my name is Matthew Rosales. I am the clinic manager for Evergreen Treatment Services. Located in Olympia. I'm one of, I'm one of three clinics. Other clinics are located in Renton and Seattle. Evergreen Treatment Services has been around for over, this year, we actually celebrated our fiftieth year anniversary. So we've been around for a while. Serving communities and helping individuals with their treatment. I've been with the organization for about five years now. I've enjoyed every minute of it. I'm a registered nurse. I started off my career in the emergency room. After several years of the high adrenaline and just the constant rush, I decided I needed to change. I came across this position, working, you know, with Evergreen Treatment Services and. You know, it's been great. And to be honest, at first I was a bit skeptical, skeptical like a lot of people are, you know, with the stigma. But, you know, after witnessing transformation and numerous individuals that we serve, I am now a true believer in what we do and how we help people. The change and growth I've seen in a lot of our patients is, it's mind blowing. It always brings you back to this one quote or one, yeah, it's a quote now that a patient once told me that. Just the program, like his journey in recovery is like a country song, a country song in reverse. He got his wife back. He got his kids back. He got his job back. He got his dog back. And most importantly, he got his life back. I thought that was pretty, pretty cool when he told me that. It was kind of funny too, but that was pretty awesome. So that's enough about me. I, I want to give you guys a brief presentation of what my, my organization does and what our plan is to do for Mason County. Our vehicle is scheduled to be delivered this Thursday, the fourteenth. It's coming from North Carolina. As Mark did, it's a retrofitted RV van. It's about thirty foot. Approximately thirty feet wide by eight to ten feet, I mean, thirty feet long by approximately eighteen, ten feet wide. We're aiming to hit the road by mid to late October. We can't wait to get started. We were given this van, we purchased this van through a grant through the healthcare authority. We've, I started off by coming out to the community and meetings. One of them, the main one being the stakeholders opioid, Mason County stakeholders opioid meetings. Got a ton of support letters to help us get this grant. So. I want to go ahead and share my screen if that's okay.
Yep.
All right. Hey, do you guys see my screen?
Yes.
All right. So our program, we call it Treatment in Motion, TIM for short. We also have a mobile unit in Seattle that's currently up and running. We actually started this before COVID. When COVID hit, we had to shut down the process, but it's back on the road again. And serving individuals in downtown Seattle area. So. Let's get started. I'll tell you a little bit about ETS, Evergreen Treatment Services. We're a nonprofit organization that's been providing substance use treatment and street-based outreach services in Western Washington since nineteen seventy-three. We serve more than seven thousand people every day in our three clinics. We follow a harm reduction approach, which means we provide services regardless of whether an individual is using. Drugs or not. So whether they're using or not, we still provide the medication. Our aim is to keep people as safe and healthy as possible. We also build long-term compassionate relationships with those who we serve. We not only provide medication, we also help with housing, employment and reconnect. Patients with their families. We have case managers and counselors, medical providers, all that and our staff to help patients. We serve people who use drugs and are in recovery, people who are unhoused, have unstable housing, people who are incarcerated or formerly incarcerated. Here in Thurston County, we, we go to the, we go to Thurston County Correctional Facility and those individuals there as well, including pregnant patients. Everybody with extensive, everybody, everybody from excessive trauma homelessness, system barriers, social inequity. Untreated medical conditions, stigma, criminalization, we treat, we treat people from all walks of life. Our program. These are the service, some of the services that we provide, medication for opioid use disorders, counseling and behavioral health therapies, medical supervision and recovery support services. So I'm telling a little bit more about medication for opioid use disorders, also known as MOUD. MOUD is the use of medications in a combination with counseling and behavioral therapies to provide a whole patient approach to treatment of substance and disorders. This evidence-based treatment method recognizes the effects that prolonged opioid use. Has on the brain and helps to manage this medical condition by stabilizing brain chemistry. Treatment begins with stabilizing the person's psychological condition with trusted medications like methadone or buprenorphine. Once stable, patients are able to, able to begin addressing the psychological, emotional and environmental circumstances surrounding harmful substance abuse. Just a little bit about the efficacy of methadone. It actually, studies show that it reduces mortality by fifty percent. It reduces illicit opioid use. It decreases, decreases injection of drug use, reduces HIV transmission risk behaviors, reduces risk of HIV diagnoses. Improve social functioning, reduces the risk of Hep C. Provides a better quality of life and retention rate is the highest for methadone, four times that of a drug-free or placebo treatment. So it has shown, studies have shown that it is very effective. This little graph shows the different. Different stages in medications versus. Methadone, fentanyl and heroin. So the red shows where methadone, where it keeps a person at, kind of keeps them in a steady state of mind. As you can see with fentanyl, the light purple, it just goes up and down. The person never is stable. Same for heroin. Fentanyl is a little bit more drastic with the heroines. It's just, it's pretty bad as well. Here's a couple, some more quotes from our patients that have been in treatment. I could read them. I'm grateful Evergreen is there for people when they decide to make change. They've been there for me every time. Happy with who I am today and that's all that matters to me. I do not know where I'd be if I did not have ETS. Evergreen saved my life. The clinic has given me hope, confidence and encouragement. You know, we hear this type, these type of quotes every day from our patients. It's, it's just amazing what some of this stuff, some of this, what this medication can do for some of these people. And we just strive to keep doing it and spread it throughout different communities. So this is our van that we are going to be getting. I actually took this picture. I was, I did training in North Carolina. They sent me to learn all about it, learn the operations, ins and outs of it, ins and outs of it. It's pretty awesome. It's. It's about two years old. Like I said, it was, it was retrofitted. Everything was taken out and then. It just turned into a medical unit. They added medical beds that have a mini dispensary in there that we're going to dispense some medication from. We're excited to get it. And like I said, we're getting it this Thursday. So this, this medical unit, it takes a clinic and puts it in a van. So it makes everything in motion, treatment in motion. We'll, we'll be able to treat the patient with medication. They'll be able to see medical providers in the van, whether it's doing an intake or just a medical assessment, a dose, verify. A dose evaluation to, you know, to increase or decrease their dose. And we also will be providing behavioral health service. From our counselors. Case managers would be present as well to help with, you know, outsourcing resources and just community of connections. The recovery supporting that they're going to be on this van are, like I said, the medical providers, case managers, intake coordinators. In addition to all these individuals, we're also going to have safety specialists out there to help. Help patients kind of navigate our system and just watch out in the, in the surrounding area to keep, try to keep everything as safe as possible. You know, the team brings a mix of lived experience, field expertise and compassion for people with substance use disorders and those experiencing homelessness. Our program goals are to increase access to health resources. We know out in Mason County, it's a bit limited on resources for medication, especially methadone. We know there is buprenorphine present in, in a couple of programs, excuse me. Methadone is not available out there. And, you know, studies show that, you know, it is really needed in Mason County, our services. So that's why we decided to reach out to your county and provide those services. To Mason County. We want to improve health outcomes for individuals by creating partnerships, organizations, serving clientele, often not able to access MOUD treatment. And bring lifesaving treatment directly to those in need. And by establishing a system that supports routine access to care and sustained treatment that are critical and MED, MED success. We're all about just meeting people where they are, where they are. We currently have at our clinic about nine hundred total. Nine hundred and fifty total patients and approximately two hundred are coming from Mason County. Some are actually coming, you know, with great attendance, but a large portion of them are, have poor attendance. Most of it's because transportation issues. We want to target those patients first that are having trouble getting to us. We want to come to them and help them. And in addition, we, we always hear from those patients that they have friends, family and other people in the community that would, you know, benefit from our, our services, but just cannot make it to the clinic. So that's why, you know, we're coming to you guys. This is some facts about MOUD. And some harmful misconceptions. Oftentimes people say MED is trading one. Addiction for another. The fact is actually probably the most common. This myth is often used to shame people for utilizing a medication to assist in their recovery. In an opioid treatment program, MED, MOUD is delivery and delivered daily and people make the mistake of believing that taking this medication daily means you become addicted to it. Many medications are taken daily and are not associated with addiction. MOUD is no different. Another myth is drug addiction is a choice. Fact is drug addiction changes a person's brain, nurturing emotional and physical dependence. That keeps a person using even when drug use hurts them. Opioid withdrawal, opioid withdrawal can cause painful and uncomfortable side effects and may even make you severely ill. This often makes quitting feel nearly impossible. Drug addiction is complex medical issue that involves physical, psychological dependence. The brain chemistry of someone's experience opioid, opioid use disorder compels them and keeps, compels them to keep using. Another myth is that it'll make you high. When prescribed properly, it actually reduces drug cravings and prevents relapse without causing a high. In fact, the medication helps people regain stability in many areas of our lives, in their lives. Our medical providers often see patients daily. For medication adjustments, if patients complains of feeling lightheaded or feels like their cravings are still present. The medic, the providers adjust accordingly. So that's one service that we often offer to our patients. Another method, it increases risk of overdose. One of the goals of MED is to reduce the use of illicit opioids. MOUD reduces cravings and withdraw from opioid use, decreasing use, which directly impacts the risk of overdose. Deaths from overdose decrease dramatically in people using MOUD. Some people say it's not true recovery and it's just a crutch. Fact is opioid use disorder is a complex chronic medical condition, not, not simply a medical behavioral choice or moral failing. MOUD helps participants achieve recovery as they are no longer using illicit substances or experiencing loss of control or use. We believe recovery is unique and individualized and is here to help in that journey. And we're here to help in that journey, sorry. Another myth that our types of clinics and services bring more crime to the community. The fact is that we pose no additional risk of violence above and beyond any traditional business in the community. Research actually suggests that there may actually be less service crime near clinics than other community businesses. So that concludes my presentation for our clinic and our services that we will be providing soon to. To Mason County. If you want to learn more, we can go to our website, evergreen treatment dot org and find out more about what we do and, and how we do it.
All right. Questions? Lots. Lot of questions.
Are you open for questions?
Yeah.
Okay. And so do you only help for like drug use and homelessness? Let's say hypothetically, somebody came in and all they, they just had a cold. Is that anything that you guys treat?
They just have what? I'm sorry.
Maybe they just have a cold or a spray or something. Maybe it's not, no.
No, unfortunately, no, we don't.
Okay. Um. How often would you be coming here?
This will be a Monday through Saturday. Service.
Okay. And then how many hours a day?
Approximately, that has not been set as of yet, but I would say about four to five hours a day.
Five hours a day. And will it be different locations?
As of now, we have three locations that we are able to use after speaking with. Deputy. Yeah, Jason Jacoby. Yeah, Lieutenant, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are able to utilize, utilize a couple of parking spaces, one being the Mason County Court District. Parking lot and there's a parking area behind the St. David's Church. We're also, we're speaking with Jason Free at Community Lifeline. And I believe there on Third Street, there's a van that actually comes once a month. Peninsula Community Health, they park along that street there, but I did, I'm kind of hopefully not trying to stay away from that area. It seems a little congested right there.
And how many staff members will you have onboard at this time?
Approximately six.
Okay.
We have two nursing staff or driver, two. Safety specialists and a case manager. And. And a medical assistant.
Okay, that's the most of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah.
So you already have two hundred, over two hundred clients in Mason County? That's correct?
Yes. And we're.
How long will it take to make a connection?
Excuse me?
Folks, how long does it take to make a connection with folks and how many more folks do you think in Mason County need your service?
Um. We're estimating anywhere from fifty to a hundred additional at this point. We don't know for sure. A lot of it's word of mouth. There's approximately thirty of our, the current two hundred that come here that. Have really a pretty fairly poor attendance. We want to help them out first. We know we're obviously going to help every, all the, all the patients that come from that area, but we want to focus on them that have the issues of transportation. And including bringing on new people that cannot make it to the clinic at all.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for making connections out here and I appreciate, I for one appreciate your offer of services and I would like to invite you in to get those hundred, hundred people. Added to your client list.
Awesome. Yeah, what do you, what are you guys doing for your housing access, access and support? For housing, we are, we have, our, our current case managers are actually working with, they're reaching out, they've been going to a lot of events there in Mason County, reaching out to different. Individuals there to get better knowledge because obviously we're not, you know, we're coming from Thurston County, so we don't have. A full knowledge of, you know, what's available out there, but a lot of our, our case managers and our counselors are actually doing research and finding out more about that. So we can help patients, but the connections that we're making are pretty great through the, the, the meetings we're going to. We had a booth set up at your. Overdose awareness event last week. We made a lot of connections there. So. We just hope we keep building these relationships and, you know, to further help everyone there. Do you offer any type of funding for them or anything like that? Or do you have resources for funding for housing? Yeah, we do have, right now we have some grants that we, we are, we are able to utilize. So we, you know, we don't have a, a whole lot, but we do have some funding for that.
Thank you. I have a question. Who, how do they get their Sunday dose if you're, you're Monday from Saturday?
That the Saturday, the Saturday they will get their dose at the window and then you'll get an additional, like a take home to a bottle.
And, and you guys prescribe that?
Yes, our, our medical, yeah, medical providers will be prescribing that.
And the last question was for me was, what if they're actually using and they take methadone? I mean, what is that, what happens there?
If they're actively using?
Yes.
It depends on, we, we do random urinalysis on the, on the, in our clinic, but on the van, we're going to be doing mouth swabs. To test for drug use. It, it depends on the medical provider's decision on what they want to do and it depends on what they're using and how often they're using.
And Matthew, you talked about partnerships and relationships that you're building in this area. Can you talk to us about some of the relationships you have formed? Either through the stakeholders groups or with other groups in our community that are engaged in this work?
Sure. Like I mentioned before, Community Lifeline, I've built a pretty good relationship with them. Peninsula Community Health, I built a relationship with them. I actually, I will be meeting with them next week for possible. You know, just, I know they have a route that they, that they follow. So we may be, you know, finding out where they go and park and see if our services are needed there. I've reached, I have a relationship with Cheryl Haywood. She's the executive, executive director of the Shelton Library or just. Timolin Library in general. She's actually going to allow us to do our, we're planning out like an open house kind of deal on the September twenty-second. And she's allowing us to do it there at the library in Shelton. So that's a great relationship and just the, the other people that are in the stakeholders meeting. Meetings, I, top of my head, I can't think of names. I know there's Christina. Mullen Chin. Commissioner Shutey. My gosh, you know, there's, there's so many. I just kind of, I wish I wrote these names down. Yeah, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty extensive and tomorrow I plan on attending the meeting. There's one tomorrow, I believe, for the opioid. Response group. So I'm going to be there tomorrow in Shelton to talk to more people and spread the word more, spread a word, spread the word about our event that we're, we're, we're doing on the twenty-second. Hopefully you guys can help. If you guys would like to spread that, the word on that too, we're gonna be there at the library with our, the unit, the, the van. And we're gonna kind of show everybody what, you know, give a quick tour and if anybody has any questions or, you know. We just want to just do like a meet and greet with the community and continue to build those relationships. The last thing we want to do is come in and. And people just hate us or want us, you know, get, you know, you know, want us out of there and, and we, you know, we are. We are expecting, you know, some pushback from community members, which I think is, you know, kind of normal, but, you know, we're, we're expecting that. So hopefully we're just trying to prevent as much as possible.
This is the, so you have, usually there's like a bus service where they actually go to Lacey. So instead of going to Lacey every day, they're actually going from, just get it locally. Get to help locally?
Yes. I think from Mason County, I believe it's. Not, not Dalla, right? But I forget the name of the service, but it is a service that does bring them. But some people have issues getting onto that service as well. There's some restrictions, so.
And so I know, I know people that have gone up there, they give them gas card instead. So it's probably more helpful to have them get on here.
I have another question. So you said that you guys started in Seattle and now you guys are like in Thurston County. Do you, have you worked with other different small places? Like, I mean, consider, I consider us smaller. Have you worked with places that are smaller, more population size closer to us? And if so, do you have any stats on that?
Um. Yeah, that's a great question. I, I don't have the answer for that and I can find out more about that for you if you like. I, I want to say there isn't really anything that we, my clinic in particular has, we haven't done anything like this before in the, in the past, but. If I will find out and I'll try to get the information for you. We, like I said earlier, we do do this service in Seattle, but, you know, they service Seattle. They don't leave the, the county. So. This might be the first.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll let counsel know. I did talk to David Windham at Mason County Public Health and there, he indicated support there. He says it's a program he's familiar with and under your stations he worked in. Provides a service to those that need it most and those that stay on a path like Matthew mentioned of keeping, keeping a job, keeping a family, keeping house. It's really important for those individuals to maintain this level of medical treatment. So.
Are there statistics that he can share of the clients he already has in Mason County?
Yes, I can, I don't have them on me right now, but I can get that information for you.
Thank you very much.
What kind of statistics?
Just abroad, I'm not, you know, asking specifics, just how effective were they? How, what's the recidivism rate? What's? You know, how many people are not going because they can't get there? You know, all, you know, those kind of questions. And then the ones that do hang on, how long does it take for them to wean themselves off? And, you know, those kind of questions. So.
Do you have any evidence that your services help bring down the amount of EMS calls that in, in a particular area?
Um, I do not, but I'm sure that's more information I can probably get. Since we've been at this particular, in Olympia, if we've been there for, I believe, twenty years now, so. I'm not sure if I can get information from there, from twenty years ago, but. I can see what I can get.
I'm just hoping that it will alleviate some of the pressure in our local, you know, emergency services and then also the hospital itself. I'm optimistic for that.
Yes, I would, yeah, I understand where you're coming from. It's a great question.
All right. Any other questions? Thank, thank you very much. I think it's a service that we can use here in Shelton, Mason County. Appreciate you bringing them.
Yeah, no problem. We look forward to helping serve the community and build some pretty good relationships. I've been going out there a lot recently and I'm actually enjoying it and meeting a lot of new people. So can't wait. And hopefully some of you guys can make it out on twenty-second to the library.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now public works, superintendent Fred. Guys, to share a phrase about the street fund.
Evening, Mayor, Council. We have an update to a PowerPoint.
We have an update to a PowerPoint, maybe just a minute, like a year ago, here now. On basically overview of the street department, our road system and what. These three departments' functions are in the city, uh updated the cover sheet with the new overlay at Rockdale. Conceded before and after and just are getting ready to close that project out. So this is a list of just operational duties that the Street Maintenance Division does. And feel free to hop in this study session, so we don't need to wait till the end, we can comment all the way through. So. As you can see, the list of duties is. Kind of all over from major construction projects to picking up. Small trash cans around downtown area. Um but it is uh. It's a lot of. Work for a small crew. Some of the highlights I have with the traffic signal maintenance that we do internally, we have some certified people that do that, that's a cost savings. We used to ship that out and have that contracted out, we do that internally. Um the crosswalks and rapid flashers from the school zone, we do repairs on those. We don't do the programming on them, but that's all through the school district and place department. Uh we service the community with uh road closures uh. Events, all the events downtown, blocking the streets off and then we did the cleanup afterwards. The biggest um is keeping our roads. As well maintained as we can, um and that includes the winter operations. That can be huge year to year, it can be really costly and a lot of time one year. And then not so much the next year, if it all depending on the weather, right?
In the last three years, so it's been snow.
And we really have increased that, we've um developed new equipment, the de-icer uh and the salt machines. And you've seen those in purchases over the last few years. And this is our. Street force specific task out of Public Works. Um first app, we have six point five total employees. Right now, we have vacant positions, we're kind of waiting to get through budget and figuring out all of the numbers before we look to fill that vacancy. And then this sheet of our revenue sources, um. TBD. Funds, we've been trying to utilize that as much as we can towards projects and increasing our road maintenance. We've seen Front Street, Park Street, some of those, and we also use it as match for grants. This year, we're going to. Probably need to use some of that and it'll come forward in the budget of being able to fund some internal expenses. So not just with capital projects. That actually can be increased a little, um whereas it needs voter approval. But it is set to expire in twenty twenty six, so. That's a very. Important. Revenue source for us, um and then we have listed out, you know, revenue breakdown is just a. It's a more. The one on the bottom is more kind of individualized, some of these up above are a couple of these one together. So TBD tax right away permits, most demo and fuel tax are kind of lumped together. The interfront transfer for sweeping comes from the storm fund, so we can run the street sweeper. And then the transferred in from the general fund and we did some our money to transfer in this year.
So, yeah, so maintenance operations, so you can support it through our funds in the street department this year. That is anticipated to be expanded um through the end of twenty twenty three. And so therefore, if we continue funding the street fund, that's um in my level. That'd be a transfer from the general fund, so.
One, it's a little alarming to look at this and say, you know, revenue, two million and six seventy five of that TBD. And about sixty-six of that came from the general fund, so obviously there's a significant cost to keeping our roadways. Not just maintained, but accessible for emergency vehicles. I know how much work you all put into what you do, but there's really staggering figures that we need to be mindful of as we're looking at the budget. We're coming into next.
Yeah, there's some sunset, right, to anticipate here and some crack planning um to make sure that we're to. Continue to be taking these valuable assets.
Yeah, and that I fifty-six would actually be one point six if. If we didn't have our funds, but the TBD for this year was not, this career was not, you know, we we put that towards projects.
The street lighting category, um it's like a hundred, I'm looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two. I think the next, the next slide, you have street lighting. Um is the brunt of that cost the utility payments, utility bill payments?
So to keep them on, yeah.
So it's it's kind of like uh in some of the, I guess I'm getting it, some of the, some of the numbers, it's not construction costs, it's not uh maintenance costs. It's the utility bill payment, so it's not like we're putting up a hundred and three thousand dollars of the streetlights every year.
Yeah. There's there's some, there's some radiation accounts associated with streets too, some roadside.
Yeah, I noticed roadside was well over, um I'm kind of curious what's up with that, that's like veg management and stuff like that, right?
So on the expenditure side, I can give you a breakdown on.
Yeah.
On these uh. So at the top sheet, the only one that's really not on the bottom, the more explained out is the indirect cost. And that is the cost of to run the city through other departments. So it's paying invoices to. Uh legislative, IT, personal department, all of those get funded out of the indirect cost, so that's the. And then if you go down to the bottom in the divisions, um roadside. That's everything along the shoulders, the mowing, the trimming, roadways, the potholes and the maintenance in the actual road sidewalks.
Street, street trees, roadside.
And yeah, street trees, downtown street trees. Uh sidewalk repairs, AD ramps, uh snow and ice control. Um that's pretty self-explanatory, the power and the de-icer. Special purpose pass is the Rockdale Road, those paths that are.
Yeah, plow those, yeah, maintain that.
Yeah, street cleaning is a sweeping and then the lighting, as you said, it's a lot of those utility bills and full charges. Uh traffic control is the signal maintenance that we do internally. And then the transfer out is those TBD funds that we have in the account transferred out to do a capital project. So here is a classification of payments, um kind of gives you links it to the P PCI ratings that you'll see.
Payment classification index, is that right, Brent?
Yeah.
Paying the classification index for those that.
Yep, it's uh, you can see a seventy is a pretty good road, but it's older, probably. Is ready for some service and then fair, it's got some cracking, but it's just surface cracking. Or it's alligatored out, water's gonna seep through, it's the. Subgrade and then very poor, it's almost undrivable. And then gravel. So we have approximately fifty-four. Miles of centerline or centerline miles of paved streets, about five miles of gravel roadways. And we're trying to address some of those in the next year's budget, we'll be at zero gravel roadways. Replacement value is approximately a hundred and forty million dollars.
Because gravel roadways are a maintenance liability, correct?
Their maintenance liability and their. You know, a lot of them are narrow, they're not, they're not desirable, they're narrow, the issues with buses. Your safety vehicles. In this chart. Is, there's your pavement index or condition index, um. The payment study that was in twenty twenty says our PCI was averaged at sixty-nine with a backlog of fourteen point three million dollars. To bring that back up. The proposed uh payment projects for twenty twenty four, a portion of the gravel roads in the Capitol Hood or Capitol Hill neighborhood. And then chip seals, some local roads, we bring that to council and get the idea of what neighborhood is that you'd like to see that done in. And then we're going for a grant to try and redo one highway north from C Street to Wall of Stadium. And this is a grant that we applied for, last year we already have three hundred thousand put towards it. In twenty twenty-three, we're gonna put another hundred and ninety is try and get that grant match. And. In five years, the citywide average PCI is expected to fall from sixty-nine to sixty-four at the current funding levels. We're going to complete a new study and uh and update that PCI rating. To see what it has been over with the new projects that we've done, we've we've got Park Street done, Western Gateway. Um things of that.
The PCI rating, is that pretty standard for a town of our size in Washington to be about there, are we high or low?
Um I will look to see where we land at in the scale.
I think it's worth noting too, that up until twenty twenty, we didn't actually have an identified PCI. So I don't know how many smaller communities have those figures and um it it's kind of a subjective. Um number assessed by staff based on the condition of the roadway, so I appreciate that we're now moving towards measurable. Um you know, how well are we doing compared to where we were, what does that look like and?
And it's physically what we can expect, right? We're definitely gonna have staff time to walk every street, the lane, the streets, you're taking some general. Um visual observations and then applying those to her street sections. Um I think in twenty twenty, we had intern perform some of these functions. And and so sometimes when you're turning an intern loose, right? If you may not get the level of service you might from a more experienced staff member or somebody from the engineering department. So um you get what you pay for quite a bit, you know, um the information brought in is information out. So we really interested in updating this study, getting some more uh current information. Uh out to council and better better quantify what the true need is.
Just curious that we.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
We use the streetwise. Yeah, so that's the state standard.
I was curious about that too.
Yeah, so that type, that'll essentially every section of road we would have graded, uh it's the number of lanes, the wheel path length, the area. And then we're talking about alligator track and longitudinal track transfers, tracks, traveling, patching, the square footage, all that data gets collected for every route. And then there's a distress information table where there's math that gets computed that helps you come up with the number. So it's not just a drive-by swag where they're looking out the window, uh there is a little bit more involved in it, but and it is a standard process, so. Shouldn't fairly. Yeah.
Entering the reading.
Really consistent to Sharon's point.
Really good, if you get the right information, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And then this graph is pretty telling, it's just, so take the red line and it's. It gives you the years out and if you, the further you let it go down there, the more it costs for those repairs. If you keep up on your road system. On a frequent basis, then the maintenance cost goes way down.
That's the same with pretty much anything that.
Yeah.
That was the best painting out.
Right, yeah.
Uh if you put paint, you're setting and painting your house, right, it degrades pretty darn fast.
Put change the oil in your car.
Keep a nice coat of paint on it, uh keep the moisture out of it, it lasts.
Yeah.
You know, as long as, you know, rather than most people's life span, so.
Unfortunately, though, um we're still paving roads in areas that haven't been preserved. Like we haven't done any strategic preservation, right? We we paved a lot of residential blocks, in my opinion, that we should have touched with some sort of pavement preservation project first. Before we're putting any capital dollars, TBD dollars for that. And so as we talk, I think I've mentioned this before, but we can maybe take this a step further and say, um, cause to that that chart tells a story. Um then before we put any capital dollars unless it's failed roadway, uh before we put any capital dollars, it's be, there needs to be some sort of strategic maintenance done. To the road before we go after capital. The twenty city blocks thing that was a thing in the past, I mean, that blew that all to pieces, cause we weren't really strategic about those investments. How we pick those twenty blocks, to be honest with you, so um because we gotta stretch that dollar as far as we can and we know things like chip seals. And uh other improvements uh go a lot farther as opposed to whatever it is now, million and a half or two million a lane mile. To pay plus all the drainage improvements and everything else that goes with it. So I'm a big fan of if there's a policy or direction you need from us to implement a a one-touch type of policy even for pavement preservation. I'd be happy to work with you guys on that.
Yeah, in the in the. Last couple of years, we've been trying to tie it in on some match dollars and we do, you know. Take our money and times it by five, right, and so we can get that much more out of it.
Yeah. Yeah, before we go.
The maintenance probably hasn't hasn't met the need up there and now we're facing a brain overlay.
Yep.
Um as opposed to a chip seal.
And I know like, you know, TIB funds kind of want you to be at failure for the most part. Um I don't want that to be our goal, to let everything fail so we can go get state money for it, you know, so if we if we can do the strategic maintenance. And I think we could stretch that pretty far in a lot of neighborhoods, especially your low volume traffic areas, a lot of people will be like, holy crap, I got a new road. Uh when in reality, they they got a repaired road, right?
Correct.
Um and if we can do fifty blocks as opposed to twenty uh for that mon- money, I'm like, we gotta, we gotta be taken out of.
It's it's not as popular as a new pavement, right, to to the general public, they do like nice black, yeah, new asphalt laid down and smooth. But uh the 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 cost associated with that was much more valuable to.
It's like, is it passable, is there potholing that's causing damage to your vehicle? You know, we mitigate those two items, the texture of the road and the quality of that, it's, oh, sorry, you can't take your skateboard down it as smooth as you could. But there was, you know, a crater in the middle of it before, so.
And I think a lot of people would rather have some improvement than no improvement, right, so.
And if you could chip seal, as much as it can be kind of annoying for a little while, it's like the coat of paint I referenced, it's just like that. It's it's sealing up that asphalt, keeping moisture.
Keeping the moisture from getting into the subgrade.
I just wanted to thank the city for what we did on railroad, because that looks like a very good ninety-five. And how do we get our roads to that standard? And I was proud to like walk my friends down the street and, you know, get on the skateboard or scooter. And and enjoy the downtown area, so I just wanted to thank you for um providing that. And that was safe schools or I don't know how that.
That was, that was actually.
Gateways.
That was kind of to to Joe's thought process, we use TBD matching funds for TIB grant dollars.
Right, and then Coda looks like exactly between good and fair, which is right out here at City Hall, so I think this is pretty accurate, so.
So and that kind of leads into the the pavement maintenance things that we can do on the next slide. So crack sealing, if you.
I love it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So crack sealing is the least expensive, right? And that's that's a process that we can do with internal staff. We have a crack sealing machine or about ready to go out and start crack sealing, we'll bring you. Um some data on that, on how many lane miles have we cracked seals this year. Uh bog seal, we did reach out to the county. Um they have the ability to do bog seals too, so something we don't do internally. So we can either work with Mason County or have a subcontractor come in. And do that. And do that.
Brett, would that bog sealer, fog seal, how about on Fourth Street past the courthouse? I mean, that road is pretty.
Or for like, for like a, you know, something that's, it's smooth, there's minor cracking, uh, fills up those gaps. And with minimal wear on it, right?
Okay.
I think, I think the, the concrete streets and asphalt streets are two different.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, animals, if you will, right, because um, the concrete streets or panels are really thick. They have undulated, um, we've done some foam, you know, injections and some, but they're so cracked. You can't get the whole panel to raise by the foam injection, so it's a, it's a much different beast to, to attack than existing asphalt.
That fourth street on the list. Be done.
For.
Or just re- replacing.
So, I mean, we can. We can add stuff to the list, but it's, if, if you're talking about Fourth Street going in like right behind the. The new courthouse and. A lot of those, those are concrete and in order to do it right, you either have to replace it with concrete. Full panel replacement or explode that concrete and then. You, you bring in a crusher and explodes all the concrete and then you can pave over it.
Is that what we did on Alder, is that right? We just overlay that concrete.
Which has. It was milled down to it.
Yeah, but it has, it has a less lifespan uh, by doing that, that's right, yeah.
Well, someone several years ago, I won't say who it is, it said the, the squares of concrete. In the long run are less expensive to do than asphalt because you can just. Get the old concrete square out of there and put a new one in, not that simple, I'm sure.
There's down, they can get that.
Lot more underneath that needs to be done than when you asphalt.
One of the reasons why the concrete sheets were put in is because subgrates are poor and it holds up better. Um, than asphalt with over the subgrates, and once you pull that out, depending on what separates there, it might just be muck in certain areas.
Cause it is really.
Yeah, it bridges, concrete bridges well, rather than asphalt, that's like fair amount going down with the treatment plant, there was so much. Water, and so we needed something to bridge it, and that's a pretty good slope.
I think we did discuss it when we talked about six-year tip plan, I, I mean, I know it's on staff's radar that it's something that needs to be addressed at some point, so probably wouldn't be one of the most. It means indefinitely. One of his first steps.
They ate it and give it to the county at some point for the county. Yep, let me figure out how to prepare that.
We, we have looked into Fourth Street and the storm issues. With that section, it's a box over, you know, right across the road there and. It's a pretty big project that you can look into.
Some, some unique challenges.
And then slurry seal, it's crack sealed with an asphalt emulsion or emulsion and. Fine sand aggregate mixture, so it's. It's more of a base than just a crack seal or the fox seal, sorry, and. It's a little bit lasting, but it's. You have specific areas where you can do it, you don't wanna do it in so high traffic areas that get a lot of heavy trucks. And then chip seal. We've done actually quite a few chip seal on some roads and preserved them up off of thirteenth. From the hospital all the way out, um. And it. If the road isn't too far on, it's bang for your buck. And then we have a thin lift pavement overlay, you can do a one inch on lower track. And we did a two to three inch lift on Park Street as well as Rockdale Road. And the. Picture on the upper right is what it would take to do full restoration. So it's making sure your base rock and subgrades are optimal and then full three inch. Depth asphalt over it. And then grind an inlay, that's what we're. Proposing to go after for Olympic Highway North. If possible, we'll have to check subgrades, um. And then Turner Avenue, that's the most recent full. Full depth replacement where they came in, ground up all the old stuff and redid the base rock. And for those full depth replacements. Um. At Paul East Street, we were able to do the subgrade work, and we just hired a contractor to come in and do the overlay, so we try and save costs out of it. Either some general pavement maintenance guidelines, crack seal roads every three to five years, um. Cheaper keeps down on the cost and if you stay up in that three to five interval, the roads can be done. Couple of times. Uh, box, bog and sary seal coats every seven to ten years on local roads. Chip seals every ten to fifteen years on local roads, minor collectors, major collectors, depending on the wear, may need it more often. Um. After multiple slurry and chip seals, it will probably require a full overlay.
And when you say multiple, can you throw out a number?
Uh, depending on the traffic, you can, on chip seals, you can do. Two to three, I wouldn't go more than three, cause then you're building up basically another layer.
And it's not stable.
Yes. Full removal and replacement with base rock. That is the roads that get down to that PCI rating that's down under. Under the seventies, you're pushing it. So. Optimally, you would anywhere from fifty to seventy, you're, you're pushing that full replacement level. And then in intervals between maintenance. And full debris have, or it depends on the road classification and trap volumes. And what they built it on, kind of go down to the concrete blocks, if you don't know what's under there. There could be some pretty significant subgrade that we'd have to bring in to bring those back up.
I think. Yeah, I think the full removal of pavement and base rock is. Fourth Street, that, that runs under that one. I had a call, I got a call today from a citizen that she said that. She asked when that will be repaired, she said it's done some damage to her car. I said, how fast are you driving? She didn't say. You know, cause if you go fast over, you're gonna go.
Anyway, and we're just, right, this is not necessarily what we're doing right now.
This, this is a general.
Best management. Where you want to get to be.
Would be. Um, aspirational to implement. There, this, she, these guidelines, um, depending on resources available.
So basically, if we had all the money we needed, this is what we would do.
Yes.
And then roadways with higher traffic volume speeds and loads are. Um, higher level of maintenance.
You've been talking a long time, it's eleven thirty five at night.
No, no.
What do I see a?
You have bad.
Oh, oh, I actually have a, a line going across from the line.
Oh, my god.
I see him.
So this kind of sums up what we've talked about, you know, the, the street funds is. Provides meeting software to the city's largest asset, our roadway system, it's our largest asset and. Probably most used asset. Um, by people that live here and people that passed through. Uh, to properly operate and maintain the street system. Uh, operator, maintenance workers and other materials, contract and service, trending, equipment purchases. Um. Are gonna need to be considered if. We strive to meet goals at the last stage. Um, maintaining the zitting pavement, um, index. Additional revenue will be needed to complete additional maintenance and restoration projects each year. Current funding sources are TBD grants and transfers from the general funds as, as well as some. Some minor revenue from the motor vehicle tax or gas tax. Um. Locally acquired street fund is the largest source of revenue, that's our TBD tax. And we've been doing a very good job of using those in the past few years. To stretch money dollars when grant funds. Um, the motor vehicle fuel tax revenue has been decreasing. Um. With people driving less and. People getting more fuel efficient vehicles, so. If it trends in that direction, we're gonna need to figure out how to recover some of those costs. But this is, and this is kind of to your point, we're not in an idiotic situation, there's. Quite a few cities that struggle funding their street division. Yeah, it's, we're not the only one with this problem. Um, and then the TBD tax is sunsetting in twenty six, um. I've heard that there's legislations trying to reinstate that, hopefully. It goes well. But I don't think it's something that we can necessarily. Say it's gonna go through.
That's a plan that's not either in twenty six.
So forty percent of our, the pavement in the city is classified as fair or poor condition, agents of these are higher cost. Back of that chart, the lower they get, the more it costs to reat them. If we can get together a program where we really wanna target them. Seventy PCI is where we target the other ones, since we try and maintain as well as we can. Because we know that we're gonna be in for a. Bigger push on some of those. And then. The proper preventive maintenance will reduce in the higher cost of those will reconstructions. But rented maintenance, um. Projects that we reduce uh, labor materials costs for the street division. It's gonna match that chart. And then improved and more maintenance streets, increase of livability, decreases automotive maintenance. And improves the value of business activities in the entire community, you have nice streams. It's. Better for everyone.
One thing that's not mentioned here, but I know that you've been working really hard on is being intentional about calendaring projects. And so not only within grant cycles, but also partnering with uh, the counties that when. You're doing a project, everybody doing the project at the same time, bringing down those mobilization costs, um, if we are any. Not a unique situation, but we're in a situation where there's an opportunity to partner with them in some cases, I appreciate the work continuing to do with their staff. To try to make that happen where it's possible.
Yeah, and that is some of the uh, projects that we, if we. Do do a residential, we're even trying to consolidate those projects altogether for that whole piece, they're not moving across town, we have to target areas.
I'm with Joe, and I also think that roads are, I'm on the tension, so, um, I mean, you should shoot for very good. And I'd like to get into a good range and not slide backwards into the low sixties. Um, that would be my aspirational goal, and I would like to, you know, do the preventative maintenance, but are we gonna budget? That's the question, so.
I don't, what, what are you, what are you asking of us?
But tonight's not really a request, it's more of an informational, um. Presentation, I think that if, if you have. Uh, guidance as far as I think I already heard from Councilmember Schmidt about a policy or direction for pavement uh, preservation program. Uh, certainly, you know, we wanna qualify that with the resources we have available, but it means that. Just formalizing some information for tonight, uh, making sure that we target the, the streets. Streets that are in a certain condition range, um, on a regular basis, um, so it's consistent, proactive. And it's transparent with our community and with council, um, I think there's consent to that, we have time, certainly start working on that, bring some to the council.
So what, what, what do we have committed for matching funds for projects in the next couple of years?
Um, I can, for matching funds for.
Out of a TBD.
Uh, TBD, um. When we bring the budget forward, we'll have a full list of those, but so on, up there and on the highway north, um, we have. We are looking at paving some of the gravel roads up in Capitol Hill to get those off the list, um. We are looking at, we will bring to council, we have some funds, putting a hundred thousand dollars in TBD towards chip seal. But we're gonna kind of give with an probably another study session in council and kind of pick an area. You know, we'll, we'll grab some roads and with that PCI index that looked like it's a good candidate for a chip seal and bring that to you.
Well, I mean, I, I'm willing to use TBD for maintenance operations. But how much? I mean, what do we need, what do we need to put aside for matching funds for? For future projects that where we have, we do have grants coming, and we know we would apply for grants and stuff like that, so. I mean, it's a six seventy, six hundred and seventy-five thousand a year, I mean, what's a fair number, three hundred and thousand dollars?
I'd hate to guess right now, so I think we can present something that can be in twenty twenty-four budget presentation that. Has the ability to meet, meet goals of preserving, um, some of our most critical infrastructure, our streets that. You know, that will keep them in conditions appropriate, but also match, uh, projects that we. Can just pay, um, form at the same time and then finding next between, between, um. Between the TBD and the general funds, eventually.
So we essentially would look at like a similar to strategic programs policy, but setting aside X percent for the next year, for the life of it. For those projects and then obviously that would have flexier to your based on the needs, but.
It could still online for roundabouts by the felt springs and all that, right?
We're in preliminary study right now, we, we, we certainly don't have funding, uh, to construct those at this point.
So, yeah, we have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a grant for a design.
Yes.
Of that, but we don't have any construction money for that, but uh, we'll be putting in, once we get the design, we can put it in for a grant.
And that's what I meant by, much appropriate, yeah, what do we need to put aside for that kind of work and.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know, I think around about six to three million. Close to it, you know, so, yeah, so, I mean, technically, I don't, I'm not sure that we'll have TBD money available. Really sad if it TV on, right, but this sounds set in twenty-six and you're realistically not looking at a roundabout project that. Wallace and Springs or Wallace and Thirteenth, John, John's Prairie in the next two meters, three years now.
So. Are we concurrent, do you use TBD money for maintenance operations and you have Mark read back more information on that? I maybe would just say you use the TBD money to fund what you need to fund in streets. So whether it's maintenance operations, capital cost, I don't really care, it's the, the funding is to me, just to operate, maintain a roadway, right? And the network of that, so in my opinion, I don't wanna hold the TBD funds to just.
And the network of that, so in my opinion, I don't wanna hold the TBD funds to just capital improvements. Leverage it however you need to. I guess that would be a little bit more higher level with it.
It's going to be needed for.
Yeah.
Regular expenses um and that, that also does have the ability to go up. To from point two to point three. That's an additional close to three hundred thousand, but that would be a voter initiative.
Yeah, I'm interested in getting back in staff, a a policy on how we wanna handle this, but also I think. And kind of love both, what both of you said, let's use our dollars as smartest, but we don't have, so let's give our staff the flexibility to do that.
I'm on.
Before we leave today, I wanna share with you a video to thank you for taking care of our streets. So I'll cut you down before you leave.
Spend it the way you want to, sir.
Appreciate the info though, that's good.
Except for, you know.
If, if there's any, if there's any topics like this that is, you know, that is of interest, you know, similar kind of. Education pieces, this, these are great opportunities to provide to and bring this to council more further for. In good direction, proper mission staff that try directions, so please feel free there.
And I know, I know T I B is gonna be suppressed for money, you know, I know they're already kind of in that mode right now with. Um, how much capital they have to give out um. So we, I know we bank on transportation improvement board for a lot of our nature, you know, arterials, classified roads for. And for maintenance and for capital projects, so I guess my other question really quick is just. Is there any economy of scale if we bundle projects together and we get a more expensive project? Uh, that we could go to Fed funds for understanding that we'll probably have a grand catch of anywhere from ten to twenty percent. On twenty million dollars, let's say, but that's like if you wanna get all the roundabouts done. I think we have to consider bundling projects together, and I understand that that's more complicated and taxing on staff at times, but. One project potentially a year at a million, two million bucks each, you know, we'll get there. But if we can kind of get a couple big ones knocked out, um, and then as development occurs. Leveraging TIF and other, you know, TIF and REIT and everything else through development um to take care of the residential and. You know, commerce routes, right?
We need to do a better job in that um. How, how do we achieve um projects like that, especially federal funding yet to be determined?
Yeah, yeah.
When we have, when we have urban directors um performing day-to-day functions. Um, it's hard to be strategic, right? We've talked about that, we've talked, there's been talks about, you know. Um, a grant writer of some sort, but you also have to have the administrator, you have to have somebody that designs the project and manages the project as well. And manages the, the, the funds that they come in or spend at the same time, so yes, we need to be more strategic than that. Yeah, absolutely, and you can hear me harp on that, I apologize if you hear that too much, but I, I watched, I watched department directors and leads. Um, that are outperforming daily functions and um and then. Um, and oftentimes we're asked why we can't get certain things done, so I get defensive at times, if you will. Um, over that night, and if, if I remind you of that too much, just, just let me know. Okay, we heard you, Mark. Um, but I feel like I need to protect, you know, and communicate um that these people are, you know. Are, are, are working hard on day-to-day basis, and we'd like to give them the resources necessary to knock off some of these big projects. That's, that's what we're trying to achieve.
Oh, thank you. You got some direction there, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Move on to Mike for information for it's about twenty twenty-four budget.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tonight specifically, I'm bringing you information on city business and occupation tax, often referred to as B N O tax. As you know, we're in the midst of the twenty twenty-four budget development. I've been bringing you monthly financial reports and you've seen um some of the steps we've undertaken in the twenty twenty-three budget. To curb that um spending of, you know, matching our ongoing expenses to revenue. And not relying on ongoing expenses to be funded from the beginning fund balance. So. It's been clear, I think, that we don't have the revenue to maintain our ongoing services in twenty twenty-three and beyond. We've been doing financial forecasts for you um for a number of months and years. So we are bringing information about business and occupation taxes. Tonight to get direction from you on building the twenty twenty-four budget with a possible um revenue increase. In the B N O tax. So these first pages that are provided to you are really just some background information on B N O tax. That cities may impose a B N O tax um for revenue purposes that can be used for any um governmental purpose. This is in addition to the state B N O tax, so not all cities do this. Shelton has. Um, for a number of years, I'm gonna say um probably since um before nineteen eighty-two. When some changes were enacted in the legislation that we've tracked down, so it's been around a long time. The imposition of the tax generally doesn't require voter approval. It's done by the legislative body up to the. Um statutory um maximum of point zero zero two percent. Um, there are some exceptions to that where i- if the municipality had that in place prior to nineteen eighty-two. Then those rates um are higher. There's one example of a city that has gone to the voters and asked for that higher amount, and that's the city of Seattle. So that's a little bit of background. I'm not gonna read through the whole thing. It was mostly provided for you um. To gain some background information on the classes, um, the exemptions. Um, I will stop us at exemptions while it's on the screen here. Uh, let me tell you, our rate is point zero zero one. We can go up to point zero zero two. As a percent of gross receipts after a business um applies their deductions. So we spent some time looking um with the council sub finance subcommittee at exemptions. There are state exemptions, so there's a model ordinance that is provided to cities that have a business and occupation tab. Tax. If you deviate from that model ordinance that dictates the exemptions. Then you list that in your municipal code. We were looking at that this afternoon. Shelton has some um deviations. Some of them are just highlights of what's in the model ordinance and, and coming at it in a little different way. Um, so the. The model ordinance is pages long. Of course, our municipal code that's on business and occupation tax is pages long. Um, but we're looking at really some of the deviations that we make as a city from the model ordinance. Are, I'm just going to say, not always pertinent, and in some cases probably a bit archaic from. Some past. I don't even know that we putting our heads together to come up with wide deviations were um listed as exemptions. But for, I think, conformity and uniformity, one of the um asks that. Um, we're making is that we just follow the model ordinance exemptions. That's what most cities do. They don't. Um, go additionally and make some exemptions, so I wanted to stop us there to just look at that. So that you could kind of wrap your head around some of those um exemptions that are towards the bottom of the page that Shelton calls out. Um, as different from the model ordinance, so ride sharing, racing, athletic exhibitions, farmers. That's the one that we can't really put our finger on why that's in there. One of the insurance businesses, which is or are already exempted in under um statute by the state. So I don't know, again, why that's called out. International banking facilities, healthcare organizations and nonprofit organizations. So um within that, um, we can certainly. Find more information, but those are the things that we um have as additional exemption, so. That's a little bit about the business and occupation tax. I think you're well aware of it. Some of you paid, some of you have paid it, some of you know what it's about. So on the next part of the presentation, this was simply, um, I think a request was made to have a list of cities. That um have a B N O tax in Washington State. This is the list. It's maintained by association of Washington cities. It shows the tax threshold for a business to be um filing um quarterly and annual. Um, you can see it's a little bit all over the place. I would say Shelton having um ours. Where it is, it's in line with many cities, but again, one city, you kind of have to stand on your own with this. It's, it's hard to compare city to city to city. There's lots of reasons. I think you can look at some of these cities and. And say, well, that's why that city has that particular rate, or, you know, maybe it's a particular business or industry that's located within their city limits. It's merely there for you to see um kind of where everyone is um within those categories. Um, anecdotally, I think, you know, we're not in the only position of having a general fund. That's feeling itself really, the, its expenses outpaced by its revenue. So I've read in a couple of articles where cities are considering adding a B N O tax. It's one of the few options that the legislative body has under its control to increase. Um, certainly, even other things that you can do. That would require voter approval are pretty limited, so I think a lot of us are facing this um revenue. So my, my, and the general fund.
So the Shelton Municipal Code did that, is, is that the one who did this decision on how much? At a base, we can, this is twenty thousand dollars there. How does that work? How do we decide on twenty thousand dollars?
Well, that's, I think, been in place since the cities. Gone back and updated with the model ordinance, so I'm sure that's been changed over time. I can't. Attest to that, but I think that's probably been taken as part of the ordinance. Um, because you'll notice that's what a lot of the cities have. Kind of that five thousand, twenty thousand, so my guess is that was kind of that place that is seen as. A minimum.
Yeah, it'd be like two bucks a month, the twenty thousand annually.
Can, can we raise it?
We don't want checks.
Can we, can you can't increase it, sure.
It just means that anyone who brings in less than that is not paying, you know.
Right, so.
Right, so we'd actually lower.
Excuse me.
So, I, I'll, I'll just share with you, our recommendation wouldn't be really necessarily to look at that. I think. Just from my perspective and on the finance side of things, you know, businesses have to do a lot of paperwork there. Already. Kind of accustomed to filing this, so making too many changes, you know. I, I would suggest that we really consider that carefully, um, but certainly we could look at that, I think, as. Once lumber Peterson pointed out, raising it. So that we just, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. You can look at it, it, it's, I think, if anything, you can see that a number of cities have. Their set at the statutory maximum of the point zero zero two, some are under, some fall um in different places.
And some charts will show us better at the, the slideshow. It, it's part of the equation as far as for city. Municipality's revenue, it's right. For us, it may be much different than another city with a different sales tax base, different valuation. And other revenue sources, so uh we have to look at Shelton as being fairly unique in the tools that we have available to us. Might not be the same as tools in another municipality.
In our twenty twenty-three revenue pie, it's about five percent under current um estimates. Five percent of the total revenue we get into the general fund, I should say. Okay, so moving on from there, our next slide shows the, just a quick. You've seen this a number of times, and so I'll echo what the city manager asked. If you're tired of hearing this. I, I don't know, it changes a bit. It doesn't change a lot in our favor. Um, if you look up at the top left, that's where we're projecting currently where. Our um general fund budget is at, we've made a lot of corrections. I think in twenty twenty-three, we're. We're positioned um in a better place than we were, say, six months ago, but. We know where we're at. In looking at twenty twenty-three ending, um, we've, I. I wanna tell you that. A lot of hard work, a lot of sacrifice is um coming about that we'll have about. I'm estimating right now one point two million, just over that. In one-time money that we can use towards one-time sort of projects and purchases, so. Think that's the good news. It's certainly um partly, i- it's due to a lot of things and we can. I can focus on that more in future financial reports, but we'll more than meet the um council set policy of the twenty percent. As we look at then estimated revenue for twenty twenty-four, it's at fourteen point four million. Expenses are estimated at fourteen point six, so we've closed that gap a whole lot. I, I just wanna celebrate that. Uh, has been a lot of work on city staff to bring that closer. Um, again, it's not without pain, but that's providing the full complement of city services we do. I want to emphasize that there is no transfer to the street fund in that yet, though. We, you know, that's, that has to come, so you heard a presentation earlier this evening. So this year in twenty twenty-three, we're using some ARPA funding plus a transfer from the general fund. And that was about what, one point one million, if I'm not mistaken, so to keep that at the same level. That would pretty much eat up our one-time money. If we, if, if, let's say we were to do that, and that's one year that we would have that, so the magnitude of this. I think, you know, our, our ability to keep the general fund functioning is really dependent. On looking at how might we um vary our revenue sources. To increase what we can offer to our citizens, so in looking at the twenty twenty-four budget estimate. Um, it uses the twenty twenty-three cuts that we brought to you in a supplemental budget. It also includes a couple of reductions that have taken place um subsequent to those, which is. Um, not filling the um parks and rec. Direct position and an H R payroll position. It includes. Um, the increase in our contract to provide fire and EMS services in the city. Um, however. I have no way of knowing until we get property values how much it might increase in twenty twenty-four, but it does take into account that increase. We did a budget for it. It takes into account the liability insurance increase. Plus, we're estimating about another hundred thousand dollars, just to be conservative. I hope like everything, it comes in less. But I doubt that it, that, that's the. Negative part of me.
We don't, we don't anticipate that to be the case. We.
I can hope.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
But I don't think it will. So, um, taking all that of that into account, that's kind of where I'm landing at that twenty twenty-four budget. I don't think anything in there is. Overly um optimistic or overly pessimistic. It's just the reality of kind of where we're landing. So I wanted to take this out a couple of years so you could look at, okay, if you're asking us and for more revenue to, to leverage this. What's it, where's it take us in the future? Is this a one-year shortage? Is it ongoing? So in looking at twenty twenty-five, um, I, I was assuming the one percent increase to the property tax levy, but no other increases. So this is assuming we kept B N O tax and every other tax just right where it is. Our revenue would increase to um fourteen, just over fourteen point five million. Our expenses go up to just over fifteen million. And that's pretty conservative. That's simply looking at some insurance increases, very modest. If, if any cola increase for non-represented staff in the general fund, it's just maintaining really where we're at. It's not doing much beyond that. It's not doing much beyond that, that puts us at just over a half a million dollar um. Shortfall in twenty twenty five and then taking that same kind of scenario in twenty twenty six. And the T P D, I'm not even factoring that in, but just to clarify, that ends in April of twenty twenty six. So it doesn't even go a full, the full year of fiscal year of twenty twenty six. Then in twenty twenty six, we're estimating a another half a million, and that's building, remember, that's not. Isolated half a million, so that's kind of the picture in as. Open and transparent way as we can be without inflating anything, really, if we're just maintaining where we're at right now.
Twenty twenty seven, we got union negotiations again, right?
No, actually, we start those next year, so twenty twenty five will be, yeah, the contracts, all of the contracts are up the end of twenty four.
So what I'm having to do in twenty five and twenty six, again, is just some very conservative estimates on where we might land in some of those. Negotiations that affect the general fund. Okay, that.
Questions there?
Yeah, I I know you've heard this before, but I really wanted to provide you with where are we looking at now? Because the data gets a little bit better every month as we know more about what's happening in twenty twenty three and as we put the budget together for twenty twenty four. As much as we can, but we're looking for some direction from you, because in order to continue this. Building up the budget, we're at really pivotal timing here to get it fit together so that you can consider it.
And as we've talked previously, um the goal is not to face um the scenario that we just faced. Over the last several months, right, our goals to be proactive, um present a conservative budget to council. And not have such a sharp reactionary change uh to expenditures anytime mid-year uh without. Uh some unforeseen circumstance, you know, which is, you know, a natural disaster of some sort, or but that's what that twenty percent, you know. Uh reserve is for, so that's our goal here, that's why. This is being formatted as you see today, and that's what we're looking at in the next couple of years, so we can forecast as much as we can, we can plan and go after.
So if we could go to the next slide, we've got a picture of our revenues and the general fund. So what I was doing with this, it's really just showing you. Our twenty four estimated budget in that middle column, just based on really what I'm estimating it to be without. With just the one percent property tax levy increase. And then um with an estimated B N O tax, which um. Would be doubling it from the point zero zero one to point zero zero two, so increasing it at that. Um in a really conservative estimate in twenty twenty four would take it to one point three million. Um the reason I'm a conservative on that first year is because the number of our businesses pay annually, and so that lights a bit. And so we want to be reasonable about really what we're expecting in that revenue, so that's um the estimate for. Twenty twenty four, and at the bottom of that page, I I don't know if it, I can't remember what's down there, can it? Okay, thank you, so that's the, just that snipped from the prior look at twenty twenty four. So without and with the revenue increase, really just to maintain the current services we're doing. We're not forecasting that we would have any means to make great increases, but it maintains the. The services that we're providing today across public safety, um. Across all of our um general fund funded activities, so. With that, um I think I've talked with Mark a lot about, you know, we we know. Some things, we don't know a lot of things about the future of the next two or three years, it would be my recommendation that we probably take some of that and set it aside. So that we have a little bit of a cushion going into um those future years, just kind of not knowing what's ahead of us. That's that's your conservative finance director talking to you a bit, it certainly allows us. To um maintain what we're doing.
Correct, yeah, and we heard a little bit about it tonight, right, with streams, but also those critical services in police. Uh fire, EMS, our municipal court system, uh we're seeing increased cost there as well. Our our uh public defenders and public prosecutors. Uh contracts, the public prosecutor has has resigned, so we're out with an R F P there now, I'm not sure what the cost would be associated with that, but. Um I don't think attorneys are going down in their daily rate, right? Um as far as I know, um defenders, uh we've seen local jurisdictions that have had trouble filling public defender positions. And that means that um it's harder to hold people accountable and things they're doing in our community, so. Uh we want to make sure that we're able to provide them services here, um our liability insurance, Mike indicated has increased. Uh what we anticipate to be about forty percent um over two years, um I think. We're seeing that all over the country, uh we'll see more of that, uh the liability of providing uh public safety and. Uh police services particularly has increased with the years, so W C A is and it's um. Is raising their rates accordingly, uh we've reached out to um A W C for quotes regarding insurance and it's. It's no better than the W C A, so um we want to make sure we um. They're in the house today, um performing some audit services on special events, um want to make sure we meet. Um their standards, because that keeps our rates as low as possible, so uh maintaining a current and um. A current code uh that we apply in the company is really important as we move forward. As as you know, there's there's lots of other services and general services that are provided that are internal and external to our to our customers. Uh maintaining our our buildings and our infrastructure, we uh we just approved a contract to paint this facility. Um I think we've talked about our H C A requirements at the library, museum and places like that, so. Uh it follows along with discussion about the streets and if you don't, if you don't paint the siding, um you know, it continues to degrade. If we wait twenty five years, uh like this building gets new, so. Uh you know, provide those services, maintain our infrastructure, reduce the replacement costs long-term by conforming preventative maintenance. Uh is our goal, um but we have to wait in those resources.
Our insurance, not necessarily a proud statement, I guess, on this, it's had to pay out settlements, it is. Save our, save our butt anyway, um true, so even with the cost hike, it's it's uh very necessary. Unfortunately, uh yeah, you have one, one claim, not necessarily because of anybody's fault or anything, but one claim. And they've got us mostly covered, you know, I know. That's a pretty steep settlements that thankfully we have insurance to cover that, so.
There's great liability and excellent services, right? Um and even if uh even at times when uh maybe. Maybe not a hundred percent fault, there's certainly, yes, exactly right, one percent. Yeah, uh so that's why uh there's settlements at times as well.
So we're asking, as I mentioned, we're at a a really pivotal point in developing and bringing you the twenty twenty four budget. In order to develop it without making cuts, we needed to have direction on. Um your directions from you on if we should include this revenue increase in order to maintain. Current levels of service.
And we we've already had severe cuts in our staffing this year.
Uh yeah, we've re- we've reduced six F P Es, we have two positions open currently open at this time, the city engineering positions continuing to be open. Uh we're not seeing a dramatic savings from that, because we're contracting most of the services out uh to outside services. Um we have advertised for that, it's the market is is not there, um talking with some recruitment firms at the city managers conference. Um basically, I was still not even advertised at our at our base scale, right? So um there's larger, much larger um cities, municipalities, the private sector, the state. Uh all in need of particularly P E S, big engineers, uh they're uh they're recruiting and they get full positions and. We we're seeing uh on this in the private sector with our contract engineering firms and they're building term projects around on. A timeline that we need, a timeline that they frankly um used to be able to provide. Um is being more, becoming more and more difficult just because of their workloads.
Yeah, but but we've made some severe cuts in staffing and who's doing that work now that those people are doing.
Yeah, we've shifted those services around, we've reduced our our customer service hours at our front counter. Um but other than that, you know, the walk-ins anyway, we're still providing a custom service to those that have appointments and by phone calls, but. Uh payroll shifted around, the parks and recreation um functions and the director function to facilities is being shifted around. Um our, you know, payroll has been kind of shifted to um to finance and our A P, our account, the assistant accounting analyst.
And accounts receivable, we had an open position that we. Uh we didn't have to cut a person, but we cut a position and those duties have been redistributed amongst other staff.
And the shortness of staff also. Takes away our ability to increase our funding by getting grants or um applying for grants, kind of capacity to fulfill those.
Yes, potentially, I I kind of day-to-day functions rather than being proactive, um yeah, we. Now, one simple example is reduction of the studio position. Alright, so you know the maintenance worker into a studio position, because we can't get by with one custodian in the facilities we have, so. Uh things like like painting interior walls and changing light bulbs and. Uh shampooing carpets and things like that, um start getting pushed out and deferred and um I I've. Because it's fresh in our minds, I keep referring to our street presentation by Brent earlier today, right? Uh those are, those are really similar um um maintenance projects, right, might not be a street, but. Shampooing and carpet extends the life of that, painting the wall, same. For those in that definition, you might see, so, yeah.
Okay, do we have any questions, comments?
Do you have those graphs up?
Oh, could you, would you mind putting the graphs that are on the last page? The the purpose of this was really to show you at the bottom, our current percent. Of the revenue pie that B N O tax represents is five percent. So you'll notice those other areas, sales taxes twenty four, property taxes twenty, city utilities ten, non-cities. Utility is nine, if you increase the B N O tax, then at the top. The pie chart is representing what percent it would be of the amount, so it it goes to nine percent. The purpose of this is just to show it doesn't explode it as a huge. Piece of that revenue pie, it really just shares it out a bit more, so instead of five, it's nine, you know, sales tax. Is now twenty three percent instead of twenty four and so on, so it really, I think. For just that visual representation, it's not making it overtake anything.
It's not adding, it's stopping completely.
What's the good, what's the goods and services? Oh, good and service.
Permit fees and over the counter permits rental parts.
All of those kinds of things. Thank you for reminding me about that, I forgot, I added it special. Thank you.
Yeah, I just think, uh you know, it's kind of Eric's point, this year we've we've done our part, in my opinion, that making all the. Significant cuts we can make and not impact. Uh you know, reductions in level of service and incredible areas of city that, you know, we need to keep afloat. So I'm at the point where I'm supportive of uh considering this. Um albeit the code language needs an update for sure, um and I would like to start with, start over on that. Um and and just consider the additional one ten. Um just straight across the board.
And based on model, based on model code, I think.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever, whatever is.
The state.
Yeah, not, yeah, because I mean, there's something about like horse racing in there, and I haven't seen a horse race.
I don't think it's a horse, it just came right, oh no, we listed up, it's horse racing, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, like from nineteen thirty five or something, I don't know, whatever, but it's just.
They did have horse racing on Loop Field back in many, many.
And that's just one of those things.
We're charging B N O tax.
Yeah, the 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 athletic events referenced, yeah, wrestling matches, boxing exhibitions, sparring.
Yeah, and those things in my opinion are single events, and I don't think they're. Yeah, so, yeah, uh but yeah, definitely need to take a look at that and. Uh clean up the language in that, just like we've been doing with everything else, making it easy to understand and.
Housekeeping.
Thank you, there we go.
I am thankful for the B N O tax increase point oh two percent, but I also would like to help our. Smaller businesses by doubling the twenty thousand, raising that to forty thousand, and maybe not having a orderly report. So that at least we're protecting the smaller businesses, if we do increase the tax, and we're only eight bucks, right, or eighty bucks.
We're we're somewhat bound by the reporting requirements, so I don't know that we can waive that due to.
So our, but we can. If we double, but if we double the B N O tax, I'd like to double it, increase the rate of the exemptions or the uh.
On the minimum.
The minimum, yeah, so that uh is this a making forty thousand um instead of twenty? That raise that threshold from twenty to forty.
So it would, yeah, I don't.
But the larger businesses, but we, but the larger business, we should have a lot more exemptions, the only one that should be exempt are nonprofit organizations, in my opinion. So um we should take away all those exemptions, we should, but we still have the farmer exempt, the farmers still get. Exempted by the farm products or animals raised produced by Washington Farmer Gardner, so that's redundant, I think, to the to the statute. So I think all of these exemptions should be gone, except for nonprofit organizations.
They're uh careful on that, because the state R C W already exempts nonprofits and already exempts. Uh farming and all that other stuff, so my my point was just to take a look at what the state adopts, and it's state R C W states and. And basically duck that, um which covers what you're, what you're talking about, we also, there's also farmer one, though. That was another interesting definition locally, what it, what did we define farmers as?
Uh agriculture, it shall not apply to any farmer in respect to amounts received from selling fruits, vegetables, berries, butter, eggs. Fish, milk, poultry meats, or any other.
Right, so yeah, they're pretty bad, so.
The definition, I think, on farmers, actually.
Doing timber sales?
Yes.
Yeah, it was like.
That probably goes back to homesteading, they they want people to grow fruits and vegetables and potatoes and.
Well, this was.
Farmer means any person engaged in the business of growing or producing upon the person's own lands or upon the lands in which the person has a present right of possession. Any agricultural product whatsoever for sale. Farmer does not include a person using such products as ingredients in a manufacturing process. Or a person growing and producing such products for the person's own consumption. Farmer does not include a person selling any animal or substance obtained there from in connection with the person's business. Of operating a stockyard or a slaughter or packing house, a farmer does not include any person respects the business of taking, cultivating or raising timber. I think, yeah, there's been some creative license, there's been some local, um I think, manipulation maybe of some of. Some of the exemptions that um would, I think, benefit us, that benefit us to ask consistency with state.
Yeah, just match the state change. Be you okay with um it coming back as a business item?
Yes.
Okay, Sharon?
Yeah.
We all know, um Vitra.
I'm just, I am as well.
What is, uh and roughly on timing, it's you wanting to prepare for the twenty twenty four budget, so you're.
Yeah, exactly right, I, this is, I mean, obviously, study session tonight, this informational. Appreciate, you know, there's consensus here, so staff can can move forward, but this is critical in preparing the twenty twenty four budget, we want to be conservative. Budget, uh so and and but we also want to present a accurate and balanced budget to you, so. If this is to be considered, we're probably looking at um October seventeen, I think, is the third. Tuesday afternoon, so we can get the ordinance put together, get the rest of supportive information to council in a reasonable amount of time. And then that's that's a budget presentation as well.
And then that's, that's a budget presentation as well, correct?
Probably. Hopefully, yes, maybe.
So I think we're in parallel, so there we, so we can consider, yes, we consider accurate um or propose. Uh, revenues and expenditures in twenty four at the same time, whereas this ordinance, uh, revamp.
Well, I definitely appreciate the discussions tonight. They're ne- they're never fun, but. I mean, it's sometimes, I mean, you know.
They're informative.
Yeah, I I didn't mean they weren't fun, I'm I'm, you know, talking about raising fees and taxes and things at the same time. But unfortunately, we want to be solvent city and and keep our doors open, we, something has to be done, there are very few revenue sources available to the city. You know, like we said in the past, you know, out of that eight point eight percent sales tax in the city. We get one percent unrestricted for general fund, actually, we get point eight five percent of one percent. Of of that eight point eight for general fund money, and then we get the. The the one tenth is a one ten for the T V D, which is for roads, and then we have a public safety tax, that is, that is what, pretty much what we have. And we don't have any other options, um, the B N O is 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 one of the only ones available. Um, I'm sure there's a few other levy limit, levy limits and stuff that we probably do, but, you know, property values going up doesn't really increase. The taxes either, um, by statute is one percent a year, Mike already mentioned tonight, so uh, it's tough, I mean. It's it's tough, and 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 two tenths of one percent is. I know it's some people have to pay it, but it it it's not a whole lot of the grant keeping things to keep your, keep your city solvent and. Your roads, it's um, from snow, you know. Clear from snow every hour, which we, the last few years sucked. I remember not having snow for three, we had snow for like three years. That's no, so um, we want those arterial works clear, we want ambulance to be able to pull the hospital and. Unfortunately, if you don't have an employee for that.
And conduct tanks.
Yep, it's the number one source of general fund revenue is sales tax. So if we can't keep places open because the roads aren't passable and we're not maintaining our infrastructure. We're shooting ourselves in the foot, so it moves us to make smart decisions and quite honestly, the other bleak conversation. That we need to have is what are reductions in levels of service and what does that look like, because. The twenty twenty six timeline also comes with it a point oh nine cut, that's a quarter million dollars on top of that. That we're not going to be getting every single year like we have for the last twenty years, so, you know. I mean, I don't want to reduce services, but at some point, you know, we can't tax this community really much more than we already are. Um, it's just not going to work, right? Um, so we need to kind of figure that out, what are the essential services of the city and what do we need that to look like?
That's strategic planning, just like you're talking about. Capital project, right, strategic plan, that's, that's, that's part of our strategic planning, it's not, right? We have to, we have to get an inspiration, we have to be proactive.
And with that, I mean, growth is essential, Shelton, Shelton needs to grow, we need, we need a couple of big box stores. Um, we need homes for those workers to live in. I'm sorry.
We need hotels.
We need all, also, which all needs to be nice, so just. Put the money together and go build one. I mean, we need to do what we have to do to to get the.
I need a move.
Some development going on here, gotta send Jay to Vegas to a conference to to shake hands with somebody. Or many somebodies.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing our best, we, we have, um, we're prepared to send comments out to a couple of the subdivisions that have been. Been in the hopper now, um, we're hopefully, you know, working towards resolution there and. Um, have some public hearings in the near future, which I think would. Be a po- it would be a step forward and and, you know, show, show the, that those investments are going to our internet, so.
Yeah, the residential boom is going to happen here, you know, it's going to happen here, just what it looks like and. What happened, what happens to the city government uh structure as a result, that's kind of up to us, right?
So we know, we know what residential development does in a community, right, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a. Influx of revenue to begin, then then that slowly erodes our ability to provide services, so. We hope that um with the influx of residential development, um, that commercial investment as well, then we.
High quality products, you know, you want a good quality product that's going to last forty, fifty years, you got twenty five, you know.
It comes when the rooftops come, it doesn't come. It just doesn't.
And just put us in that slump, right, trying to get out of.
Yeah, it's kind of right, right in between that and that a fine line, um, so it's it's starting to, starting to move. The the needle's starting to move in the positive direction, uh, it's it's slower than everybody wants it, particularly developers. Um, but we also have our due diligence to make sure, um, we minimize the impacts on these asylum residents in our community. And we address the infrastructure needs that, um. That these, yeah, that these. Stormwater and sewer and everything else that the, that the impacts, um, those impacts that come with that. So we have our due diligence to make sure that everybody that lives here, um. And shops here, travels through here, um, is, those impacts are mitigated.
Drive thirty minutes away for ten percent sales tax. Fund city of town water in the Olympia's everywhere they want, right, all their services, all their programs. Well, what I've learned is if you can't get it here in Shelton, order it from Amazon, because we get the sales tax from that. I can't get Levi's Shelton, so I order from Amazon and I make sure that. City of Shelton is getting that sales tax, and they do, and I ordered some magazines one day, delivered, and it showed Lacy's sales tax, and I called. Uh, their corporate office and they actually rebuilt it. Um, and then what showed some sales tax, though, um, it was only like four dollars, but, you know, but uh. But most of the time that, you know, um, I think a lot of the now the online shoppers actually um are honest. So we get our sales tax, so don't drive to Olympia, just order from. All right. I I believe it does, yes, it does, I get Costco delivery at H Shore on Thursdays. Most good stuff, I think.
I don't think you do anymore.
I am still working there, please, if I'm not, more than I need to be, but, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it, council.
Council, you had for the discussion?
In a minute.
Oh, oh, in a minute, I I just want, I just wanted to mention that, uh, we've heard that there's not a lot of stuff for kids to do and. Actually, there is a lot of stuff for for kids to do, with Jordan, um, with our parts department, he's just done a great job at putting stuff together. We have a field day event where Jordan spends almost all day down there, part with the kids and sprinklers and games and tossing this and that. And playing music and they're dancing and, and we have volleyball field camp and we have cheer camp. We have volleyball camp, we have martial arts, we have basketball camps, the Y M C A offers many, there's probably. In the city, the Y M C A has free community days, back to school bash, movie night. Welcome, oh, by the way, Shelton does movie night um for seven weeks, um, for the kids, and we have Halloween carnival. Burn the bird all day, whatever that is, pictures with Santa Claus, you know, more Y M C A stuff, if you actually. How to build a Lego racing car, Little Chef's Cooking, Hokey Man Club, homeschool P E, floor hockey, you know, there are many things.
And our local little theater over here on Mondays on summertime, movies for the kids, bring a can of food.
And and there's also the other agencies, the South basic county youth soccer. And baseball, T-ball for kids.
Oh, yeah.
And we also have a couple of art, you know, toys, so there, there is stuff for our kids to do in 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 Shelton and Shelton city provides some. And the private book provides some and Y M C A provides some in the high school, or the, I'm sorry, the. Provide some, so we do have stuff for our kids to do, and um, I'm not sure what more we could add. We got the whole walk and walk the Hudson Park trail and, you know, so we got lots of stuff, so nobody else has anything else?
I have one question, I, by rumor, okay, is the skateboard park being closed down for some reason? Someone said, I heard that, okay.
We had an outside of those kids.
Okay.
All right, and this means during at seven fifty nine P M.